Six o'clock. I'm going to open up the May 16th meeting of the East Long Meadow Planning Board. I have to announce under Chapter 30, Section 20 of the Mass General Laws that we are recording this for the minutes and that is also being recorded by LCAT for future telecast. Is anyone else recording the meeting? There are none, we can proceed. The first item on our agenda is Mr. Paul Karan to discuss possible drive-through restaurants.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tell you, brought me back when I passed some baseball diamonds. Wasn't that long ago, my son was playing back there. Now, he just graduated from Springfield College, so I guess we'll have to wait for the grandchildren. Hi, my name is Paul Karan. I'm a resident of East Long Meadow. I live at 15 Crestview Road in South River Estates and I'm here this evening to ask that the town of East Long Meadow consider amending the town bylaws. To tell you the truth, I feel a little bit like Kevin Bacon's character in the 1984 movie Footloose, when he moved to a town and was shocked to discover that small midwestern town that he moved to had banned through a town bylaw the dancing and rock music in town. On a serious note, I'm here to ask that the planning board consider amending the town bylaws to lift the ban on the use of drive-through windows by food establishments and pharmacies. It would be seen as a way of making East Long Meadow more business-friendly and help encourage additional economic activity. I also serve, not only as a president of Paulie Karan Associates Government Relations Firm, I also serve as a community liaison for the local Dunkin' Donuts franchisee, John Salima and his family. And as you know, Dunkin' Donuts is located, has a store here in East Long Meadow, but they would be very interested in seeing what the possibility would be to build a brand-new facility here in East Long Meadow. Currently, under the allowed-use section of the East Long Meadow bylaws, there's language that specifically prohibits the use of bright and drive-through windows for the exchange of any consumable goods. The drive-through windows allowed in East Long Meadow are specifically meant for banks, to allow for the exchange and transfer of money to banking customers. There currently, no drive-throughs to my knowledge that have been issued to any non-banking business. Now, I know there's been a historic bias in East Long Meadow against allowing any drive-through windows in town, and some of that opposition, I think, was based in the desire to allow the town to maintain its small-town feeling and also to prevent what many fear would be the explosive growth of commercial fast-food chains in town. Some fear that by allowing drive-through windows in town, it would mean sacrificing the town's ability to control and regulate that growth. Some attorneys have warned that, hey, if we allow drive-through windows to be permitted in the town, it's illegal to spot zone and you can't give preference to one type of establishment over another, and so therefore it may subject the town to litigation and may end up costing its residents hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend against, you know, being illegally denied. You could grant a drive-through to a Dunkin' Donuts, but if you deny a McDonald's, then you're open to litigation. Now, while it's true that the town would be prohibited from automatically denying certain types of business from applying for the drive-through windows, I think it's totally untrue that the town would be powerless and lose all control over growth and development in the town. To my knowledge, Long Meadow and East Long Meadow are the only Western Mass communities in the greater Springfield metropolitan area that currently have an outright prohibition on drive-through windows. I would suggest that East Long Meadow Planning Board consider amending the town's bylaws to allow the use of drive-through windows by special permit, to allow those that sell consumable goods to do so, like I said, through the special permit process. The East Long Meadow Planning Board could then establish a stringent list of conditions to that special permit that would allow it to control and regulate their issuance. Now, other communities that we do business in have the same type of special permit restrictions and conditions, and those restrictions require traffic studies to be conducted by their DPWs. It requires DPW approval for any curb cuts, any proposed new curb cuts, and to ensure that the public safety considerations of the town are taken into consideration. And order a condition that most communities attach to all special permits for a drive-through window usually include minimum lot size, establish hours of operation, require that the queuing lanes accommodate a minimum number of vehicles to make sure that it doesn't spill over into the roadway. They have outdoor lighting requirements, they have signage requirements, they have security requirements, and also agreements regarding the required ongoing operations for cleanliness and maintenance of that property. So, they can be very restrictive in terms of what is expected. We've also had situations where planning boards and city councils have said, look, if you want to have a drive-through, we don't want the neighbors to see it, so we want you to put up, you know, arborvitae's on the side, more vegetation. And again, this is part of the negotiation that goes on, that you would have the ability to control. We live in a mobile society today. Businesses know that the emphasis is all about customer convenience and the ability to satisfy customer demand. Therefore, businesses make their decisions on where to locate and where to invest their resources based on their ability to maximize their rate of return. Today, a brand-new Dunkin' Donuts store costs about a million dollars to build, and once in operation, the average Dunkin' Donuts store requires about 25 to 35 employees. Your local Dunkin' Donuts franchisee would love to have the opportunity to build a new state-of-the-art Dunkin' Donuts store here in East Long Meadow, but we are currently prohibited from corporate Dunkin' Donuts that has to approve any investment, as they don't want franchisees to build new in communities that don't allow drive-throughs to be granted. Dunkin' Donuts, we currently do about 50 to 60 percent of our business in a four-hour window, from 5:30 in the morning to 9:30 in the morning. About 70 percent of our business uses the drive-through window. People are accustomed to stopping for their morning coffee and breakfast sandwiches or breakfast on their way to work, and oftentimes, they do so by visiting the most convenient place to go. Now, if the East Long Meadow Dunkin' Donuts parking lot is full, as it often is in the early morning hours, they just keep driving to the next Dunkin' Donut for their purchase. Unfortunately, that Dunkin' Donuts just most likely will be located in a neighboring community, and so therefore, East Long Meadow also loses out on the business, but also any local tax revenue. As I understand, the way the town bylaws is, under the town charter, it would require a two-step procedure. The first step would have to be made, I guess, under the allowable-use section and the second one under the special permit section. I would suggest that the planning board consider amending the allowed-use section that prohibits the exchange of consumable goods and add the words "except by special permit." The second change then would have to be made is to amend the special permit section of the town bylaws and establish a list of conditions, and that could be attached to any special permit granted for the drive-through permit that allowed for the exchange of consumable goods by food establishments and pharmacies. The special permit section could then be amended to include specific criteria that would allow the town of East Long Meadow to control and regulate any drive-through window where consumable goods are allowed to be exchanged. Under the current town bylaw, no exchange of consumable goods can be made, only through any drive-through windows in East Long Meadow that assures that only banks are allowed to issue, to use, to be issued drive-through windows which allow them to exchange money. The change in town bylaws would not only benefit Dunkin' Donuts, but in other food establishments, but also be very welcomed, I think, by East Long Meadow's pharmacies, CVS, and Walgreen. These stores are located and they built brand-new facilities in the town, but if you look at the layout of the stores, you can see they were built in such a manner, and they moved in here knowing about the restriction. They still, they moved in here, but they built their stores in a manner that could easily accommodate a drive-through window for pharmacy services. They built their stores with that option in mind should ever the town in the future decide to change their mind on drive-through windows. Pharmacies with drive-through windows are the norm today, and mothers with sick children which would much rather prefer being able to use a drive-through window to pick up a prescription than to be forced to drag a sick kid to the store. For pharmacies, their drive-through windows have become a godsend to families with sick children and have been responsible for driving their popularity. So, in closing, it's my sincere hope that the planning board seriously consider adopting these suggested changes to its bylaws and allow the residents of East Long Meadow to dance. I mean, to allow the use of drive-through windows for consumable goods. I have flashback to, it's time to let businesses know that under this new town charter, that East Long Meadow is open for business, and I truly believe that you can well-regulate and control the growth of these types of facilities through the order of conditions that would be attached to these special permits. So...
For the record, we currently allow restaurants only in business and industrial centers. Okay, just make that clear. And restaurants are under special permit right now. So, that provision is there, they're under special permit right now. We do have the prohibition up front about not having drive-throughs. Pharmacies are considered to be convenience, sorry, retail stores, and they are allowed in business, industrial, and industrial garden park by special permit, and that's a restricted use in the industrial garden park. So, it wouldn't be a pharmacy, because we don't have a pharmacy manufacturer. So, it's really just business and industrial, those are allowed by right right now. So, we would have to, if we were to change it, we would have to put in a separate use as a drive-through for special permit to make sure we covered pharmacies as well as restaurants. Having said that, Ty, do you have any questions?
This is gonna, I really need to spend a lot of time thinking about this, and I'm on both sides of the fence for a number of different reasons, and I'll tell you what my history is. I'm a real estate developer. I've developed over 72 Rite Aid drugstores, and every one of them had a drive-through window, all over New England and North Carolina. And I see the advantage from the retail standpoint. What I need to do is get more up to speed and what the town's concerns are with drive-through, because at the end of the day, we're here to serve the town in that, it's hard to say this properly. We're here to serve the town, but bringing new business into the town is also serving the town. So, I really need to think about this. This has been on my mind for a while, it's just coming back up to the surface again. I certainly see your side of this argument, but I'd also like to understand the other side of the argument before, you know, I formulate opinion in my own mind. I guess that's all I have to say at the moment.
Ty, I was a former state legislator, served in the House for 20 years, and I'll tell you, it is always better to expand the tax base than to raise taxes. I hated, you know, having to cast those votes, but I know people have said, look, we need to do something to expand our tax base. This is something that I would ask you to consider, because there are many businesses right now that look beyond the boundaries of East Long Meadow because of the prohibition.
Yeah. And being in the retail development business, I've talked to McDonald's, Burger King, Wendy's, everybody and their brother that has a drive-through window, and they all say, I'm not going to East Long Meadow because I can't have a drive-through window. So, I understand the argument about expanding the tax base, but on the other side of the coin, it's obvious that the town, for a very, very long period of time, has been against drive-through windows, and that's a side of the argument that I need to understand, because like, at the end of the day, we serve the people that live here, and, you know, if it went to, let's say hypothetically, a public vote, and the vote were to be against drive-through windows, well, we have to honor that, because that's the wishes of the town. However, I do understand the argument of bringing in tax base, a greater tax base for more development and so forth, so I just need to really spend some time digesting this whole topic.
Deborah?
First of all, very good, very nice job, very informative. Thank you. I mirror a lot of what Ty said. I'm very conflicted. I'm on the fence, and this isn't a personal decision, this is a decision for the town, for the town's people. While there is some allure to living in East Long Meadow that we will not have drive-through, we will not have these kind of things, there is also a vast population that wants it. So, there's both sides. So, to mirror what Ty said, I'd like to spend a little more time doing a little more research and seeing exactly how our townspeople feel on this. One of the things that I saw as a drawback of not having the drive-through is, yes, losing revenue to other towns. That is huge. One of the things that I think we gain from not having drive-through is keeping it more of a quaint, intimate environment. So, I do see both sides. I do not have answers right now.
Well, we'd just like you to consider it, because...
Yes, I would like to spend some time.
Because I remember, I left the legislature 15 years ago, and one of the issues back then, when I started working, I do community outreach and government relations for the franchisee, and back 15 years ago, one of the first things he said is, can you see about getting a drive-through in East Long Meadow? And back then, it was town meeting, it was like, oh my gosh. But I think times have changed, the influx of millennials, we are a much more mobile society now.
There's a lot of them.
But I'm just saying that maybe it's time, and if the concern had been that, oh, if we allow them, they're going to spring up everywhere, well, I think, you know, various communities, and the ironic thing, Wilbraham had a same prohibition on drive-throughs.
Boston Road blew that up.
We originally put Boston Road, or put our Dunkin' Donuts there, and they had said, there's no drive-throughs. All right, so we built the state-of-the-art Dunkin' Donuts, and we had said, you know, the drive-through lane will help manage the traffic flow. And they had said, no. Six months later, they came back to us and said, would you put a drive-through window? Because what happens is, it helps the flow of traffic, so... And again, I'm not sure John Salima or Peter Martins, you know, if drivers were through, I don't think they'd do it at the existing places. The existing store is really, you know, a small. It's undersized. The average Dunkin' Donuts is about 2,200 square feet. I think that was like 1,400 square feet.
And our post office currently has a drive-through as well.
Yeah, that's US government there, outside of our city.
Right.
The dry cleaner, too.
Yeah.
That is true, Stacy's has a...
There's no doubt of, I'm sorry.
One at a time.
I didn't mean to interrupt, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Are you finished? No. Okay. Let me just state that I'm also on the fence here. On the one hand, I like the idea of drive-ins, they are very convenient and all that. On the other hand, and I also need to say that this prohibition has been here ever since I've heard about the zoning bylaw. I have no idea when it was actually put in. I've been on this board, this is going to my 10th year now. It was long before I hit this board. So, we're inheriting something that was put in maybe back in the 50s or 60s.
1993.
1993, okay, 1993. You know, so it's fairly recent, but not all that recent. What I would like to see is two things. I would wonder if you could provide us with some of the special permit conditions that are used in the other towns in which you operate, and also with a list of, I know there's one in Wilbraham, but maybe two or three Dunkin' Donuts that, or other franchisees that you would represent, their locations, so we could go out and have a look at them on our own, you know, and just see how they operate.
Well, I mean, Johnson, they've got 49, so, yeah, we'll give you a list of locations that you can look at. I'll give you a copy of my testimony.
That would be great.
Because within it, there is a list of the most common, you know, called conditions, order conditions, that again empower the town to have the say, you can't put it in a lot that's too small, you have to make sure queuing lanes, you have to make sure police and fire, public safety is satisfied with it, so...
I'm just saying that if you had, say, Wilbraham's or, you know, Agawam's or whatever, Oledlo's, that would help us see the exact language they use, because with, as you know, with zoning bylaws, language is everything. Okay, it has to be exact, it has to be very carefully crafted, and so you can see how other people have them, it would help us, you know...
Yeah. George, I extrapolated out the most common restrictions, because everything is site-specific. And like I said, we had one in East Springfield where it was budding near the neighbors' war, and it says, look, we need you to put a six-foot fence because, so cars don't shine their headlight right into the house. And the other thing, because it was a business nearby, they had us put the arborvitae's. Now, that was site-specific.
Sure.
So, it can, you can write into the conditions, and you have the ability as a planning board to say, look, you know, I would feel a lot better if you had a vegetation buffer or whatever, you could put whatever restrictions.
We can require that, and we do lots of special permits already, so we're familiar with that process. It's just that seeing the specific language that other towns use would certainly help us in understanding how we might approach something like that. The other thing, I know that we're going to hear from our constituents, and I don't know if the council's going to hear this as well, but, you know, a lot of people, when they think drive-through restaurant, fast-food restaurants, they're looking at Allen Street. And there have been significant incidents up on Allen Street where, with fights and things like that between rival towns, if you will, or rival groups of young people within living memory. Okay, and the concern, of course, would be, will this increase the requirement for police services in the town? You know, we would obviously have to ask the opinion of the police department, what they would think about this, and let them, through their public safety officer, through the chief, let us know what their concerns are as well, because that obviously is something that some of the longer-term residents are going to remember. And I think you know what I'm referring to, the...
I know what you're referring to.
And they have had to have special or extra security up there at those. Now, this is not Allen Street yet, but North Main Street is not that different. So, you know, these are some of the things that we need to consider going forward to make sure that this, if we do propose it, it is a plus to the town and not a negative. Okay? And that's why I say we need to look at some real words and...
No, I understand, and the other thing that I would add is that, under the security requirements, one of the conditions, I know that in Springfield, in some sections, we have security cameras that plug into the local police department, so it expands their view. And I'll tell you, some neighborhoods will say, we love having a Dunkin' Donuts, because it's like having a police substation.
Paul, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you know if our neighboring, our neighbors in Hampden allow drive-throughs?
Yes.
They do?
Yeah, I believe we have one Dunkin' Donuts in Hampden.
It does have a drive-through, yes, yes. I know about the Hampden house, yes.
Right.
Ty, you have no comment?
No, the other thing I was going to say is, I understand the argument for drive-throughs. I've been involved with that for a long time. I just want to make sure I understand the argument against the drive-throughs from the community before I can go much further with my opinion.
As do I.
And obviously, drive-throughs are definitely going to spur more development, because I've heard it from the retailers over the years, saying, I can't go to East Long Meadow because I can't get a drive-through.
Maybe we can do a survey.
We could do that.
That's a good idea.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Put it on the web.
Yep. I'd be curious to know.
We could advertise it.
Get some community involvement with this.
Yep.
I'd move that.
That would be beneficial to see what...
Our IT department is good at that.
I can do it.
Okay.
So, let's put the word out and see what the people think.
Yeah, and this, of course, will be on LCAT, and so we will get feedback, I guarantee that. So...
I think my phone's ringing now.
I think going forward, okay, what I think that doing a survey's a great idea, and then we should put this on the agenda perhaps sometime in July. Okay, because our June 20th meeting is up to the gills already.
Like a two-month period to allow us to...
Within the next couple of months, put this on the agenda and try to come up with proper wording to include in here, and if, as I say, if we can get some examples from other towns, that would help. And then, hopefully by then, we'll have a full board as well, not just the three of us, but, you know, a full five, so that we can hold a hearing if we choose and get public input through that as well, and see where it goes. And then, of course, we'd have to go to the council, and they have their own constituents who will talk to them about whether or not they think it's a good idea.
Julia, I will see about getting, I can give you a list of restrictions and conditions that we have for a number of different Dunkin' Donuts in different locations.
That'd be great.
But I'm saying is that most communities don't have a boilerplate.
Right.
Right.
It's specific to, depending upon, yeah, the location, but most of them always have the same concerns. Lot size, queuing lanes, lighting, some things are universal.
Well, maybe the way to put it is this, special permits are public documents. If you have copies of, say, two or three special permits that have been issued to your clients, you could provide those to us. I just, you have access to those things easier than having our department head call around to different towns and ask them to send us copies.
I'll do it tomorrow. I'll see about getting you...
That would be great.
A couple of drive-through permits in different towns and the list of their order of conditions.
Great. It's always easier for us to work with something that's been successful elsewhere than to start reinventing the wheel.
I was in the legislature, they say imitation's the greatest form of flattery. When we saw something in one state that works, we...
Yes.
Especially our neighbors, who are towns like ours.
In towns like ours. We're not Springfield, we know that, but, you know, we do have to move forward to the 21st century at some point, and this is an important issue that we need to take very seriously. So, I think moving forward, I appreciate your coming in and putting it before us, and we'll move forward on it. Can't say how fast, but we will move forward.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. This is great, you want one for you?
Thank you, Paul.
Okay. Ms. Bernard, do you have anything to bring to us? Are we just going to listen in?
No.
Very good.
I want to assure you that I am working on getting you some additional members.
I appreciate that.
It's not just the three of you making those tough decisions.
Well, also, if we're going to do special permits, we have to have a certain number of people.
Yeah, June 20th is off the table right now.
I'm very sensitive to that. I used to be a planning board member myself, so I get it.
Okay, because June 20th, we're up to our gills.
We're not doing it right now.
Special permits, yes. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is request for waiver of site plan and signage for Reflections by Claudia at 87 Shaker Road.
That's the waiver, and this is the signage.
Okay, great.
I'll redo the signage, too.
Yes.
Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Chapdelane Realty, 71 Pine Grove Circle, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Reflections by Claudia. Owner of business is Claudia Bellevue. Business owner's address is 16 Horseshoe Lane, Wilbraham, Mass. Property address is 87 Shaker Road, East Long Meadow. Property district is business/retail. Allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are 9:30 to 5:30 Monday through Friday, 9:00 to 2:00 on Saturday. Number of employees, including owner, is six. Number of employees, including owner, is six. Date of last parking plan is non-applicable. Summary of business, operation is retail gift shop, lamps, and lamp, oh, lamp sales. The application has been signed and dated May second, 2017.
And this is the old Taylor Rental location. Do I have any questions or discussions on this one? Hearing none, do I have, someone wanna make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion, it's allowed use in the district? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. We have the signage request.
Sign application, business name and address is Reflections by Claudia. Business owner's name and address is Claudia Bellevue, sixteen Horseshoe Lane, Wilbraham. Property owner's name and address is Cheptalane Realty, eighty-seven Shaker Road, East Long Meadow. Contact person and telephone number is listed here. Square footage of proposed sign is twenty-four square feet. Free standing, yes. Attached to the building, no. Step back from property line is twenty-seven feet. Distance from nearest side yard is twenty-four feet. Distance to top of sign and vertical wall is non-applicable, sign is permanent, it is illuminated. Total number of existing signs is two. Total square footage of existing signs is forty-eight. Number of proposed signs would be the same. Total square footage of proposed signs would be swapping one sign. The application's been signed, the, has not been dated, but that's probably okay. Estimated cost is two thousand square, uh, two thousand dollars, and the sign will look, proposed sign will look like this.
Okay, so that's on the existing poll where Taylor Rental was. And they're not asking for sign on the building at this point?
Not at this point in time, no.
Okay, all right.
Not many people would see it anywhere.
What?
Not many people would see it anywhere.
Except for all the people coming through.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a waiver of site plan review for Comfort Plus Caregivers.
Thank you very much. We'll talk about this later.
Red pen.
I mean, still on the record, but we'll talk about this later. Even though I can actually read every single letter of this name, I still have a difficult time pronouncing it.
You're unknown for that.
Give me a...
Rosetta Stone.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, you need a Rosetta Stone.
Crisettis.
Seon Florin.
Seon Florin.
There you go.
Excellent.
Property owner is Anthony Seon Florin Engel and Gabriel. Property owner's address is two sixty-four North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Suite fifteen. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Comfort Plus Concierge LLC. Owner of business is Marson, Marsonson, Ant, uh, these are difficult names also. Bosasaco, thank you very much. Business owner's address is two sixty-four North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Mass, Suite fifteen. Property address is the same. Commercial district, property district is commercial, allowed use is yes. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, nine to five. Number of employees are five. Summary of business, visiting nurse, emergency providing nursing services to individuals in their home, also providing home health aids. The application's been signed and dated May eighth, 2017.
So this is in, not the reminder, is it reminder building or one extra?
Next to the reminder building in the back where the medical facilities are.
The condo building for your assistance.
Yeah.
So this is an allowed use in a commercial zone, it's basically an office in an office building.
Yes. Marson to approve?
Second it.
Any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's fine. We have an administrative issue, we talked last time about trying to move towards not accepting or encouraging people not to give us handwritten applications, because a lot of times, what we see is barely legible, and it really, in this day and age, people shouldn't have to fill things out by pen and ink, they should be able to go to their computer and fill it out online. I thought that we were there, I learned since that we are not there yet, I guess we're still working on converting PDFs to...
Some of them are there, they haven't been put on, online, but again, a lot of people don't have access to computers, especially the older people. They don't know how to use them, they don't know how to fill things out, I mean, even people that come to the office that have a handwritten one have trouble with what the questions are.
So we wouldn't, maybe might not want to make it a requirement?
Yeah, but, you know, I gotta be, I gotta be honest with you, ninety-nine, ninety-five percent of the ones I'm reading are home offices with computers.
Correct, and there's a library adjacent to the town hall.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if there are, if there are a few of those, which I'm sure there probably are, maybe we can do something to help out a little bit, or printed or something really nicely, but, 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 but most of these home offices that are, which are most of the applications...
Or businesses.
Businesses are always talking about one employee, home office with a computer, is part of the application.
I mean, look at the two we have tonight. Reflections by Claudia is a business that, you know, is online as well. Comfort Plus Caregivers is an office which is managing home health aids and so on, they certainly have the ability to fill things out. If the forms are available in such a form, right now they're not, which is the problem. But I think once we get the fillable forms online, we should encourage people.
Well, that's the difference, I think, encourage rather than ban acceptance of handwritten.
Well, we can't, we can't deny a handwritten form, but we should certainly encourage it for two reasons. One, it means that there's less ambiguity about what's actually on the form, and two, it's easier to tell whether the form is correct and complete, because we, we've seen many waivers that have come in with the, for instance, the zone not properly annotated.
Most of them don't, we fill that in. Most of them don't have a clue as to what zone they're in, and they don't understand how to find it. I mean, you know, if you would spend a few hours in the office, you can hear, you know, I mean, I understand that you think, because, and sometimes when we know things, it just comes second nature.
Yes.
And we forget how difficult it is for the normal person that never even deals with anything.
I would agree with Robin on that, and what I do outside of this, I deal with a lot with that.
You understand what I mean.
Yeah, I understand what you mean, but I also wanna say that what is put on the waiver form or the signage form is important information that is on the record as what we have actually approved, and if that is not clearly written, or is ambiguous, or is incorrect, then it's hard to follow up and enforce whether or not they are actually doing what they said they were gonna do on their, their request.
Well, that's two different things, though.
Well, my point is that where possible, we should really be encouraging people to give us something that is not handwritten. If Joe so-and-so wants to put a porch on the back of his house, maybe he doesn't need to do it on a computer, but if we've got an established business or a professional office, they should be able to give us something that is legible and clear, okay? And that's, that's all I'm asking for at this point.
And how would we do that?
By having fillable forms online that people can do.
Right, that's when, until we, right, until we, we, I think that we, as a town, should get to the point where all of them are, where we have it across the board uniformly, that all East Long Meadow government forms, if you will, are able to be written, computer.
Able.
Able to be.
Yes.
And we're moving into that.
And then, once that's done, I would, I would definitely endorse a recommendation of computer-generated.
Encouraging.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's the key.
Mandatory is a little...
Yeah, I think legally, we would be in a little bit of trouble if we said it was mandatory, because, so they could say, well, I filled out the form, the information's here, but I'm, I've seen too many come in that either they're ambiguous about the zone because they put down C when it's really residency, and, you know, people think it's...
Well, C, well, commercial is C-O-M.
Well, that's the thing, you got a drop-down menu that you choose your zone from, you don't have to worry about whether they know exactly how to use the abbreviation, you know what I mean?
A drop-down menu, where?
In the form, that's, a form field can be a drop-down menu.
But how, that, well, it doesn't tell you where it is and what it is.
No, no, it would be on them to look it up, but there would be a pull-down tab, so they would be able to see the difference between residency and C-O-M.
Well, if they looked it up, it would say it on that, but I mean, I don't know whether they have the knowledge as to how it looks up.
Probably what they're doing now is asking you, hey, Robin, what zone is this?
They do, and we fill it in.
Right.
But if it's a drop-down menu, they can ask you the same question and then fill out, go down to the drop-down menu.
Just like we're buying airline tickets online.
Yeah.
Drop-down menu.
If, if it's not gonna be mandatory, that it's typed, which I understand why it would not be, may not be, maybe we can at least have the ones that are not typed printed just so they can be read, I mean, just so, you know, they can be legible.
Legible.
You mean, you want the office to...
No, 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 no. Let's say someone comes in and says, listen, I can't type this out, I don't have a computer.
And we try to say, you know, this isn't clear enough, please spell the name like I did on that one for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that, because...
I mean, it's still difficult to say the name, but...
But what Ty is saying, if they could print it in block letters rather than longhand...
Oh, print, I thought you meant...
No, 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 I mean handprint, I mean, anyone that's not using a computer, if they could use a pen and handprint.
Print, all right.
Curse, if we know it's a diary, but some are still...
Well, to be honest with you, I'll be, I'm being selfish, so I can see here and actually read an application without going, what is this word here?
Yeah.
You know, because, because I can't read the guy's writing.
All right, yes, we can do that, I can add that to the, I can add that to the applications tomorrow to print it.
So, fine, I think that, that we, we don't think we need to take any votes on this, this is fine. Minutes of, of May second?
Yes.
I did get a chance to read them over the weekend, I have not had a chance to send the corrections to Donnie.
Okay.
But I will try to do that tomorrow if I can. They, I was...
I did read them.
I mean, I don't have substantive corrections, I just have some typos and things like that.
Well, then, we need to have them changed.
Okay, yeah, usual. Okay, and is there any other business? Hearing none?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Have a second?
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.